Good evening. Welcome to the school committee meeting of August 23rd, 2022. And at this time, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. And I would take a motion to open the meeting.
So moved.
By Amanda. Second. Second by Lauren. All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you to EB Cam for always recording and televising our meetings. We appreciate it. And so we have first up on the, we don't have our student here tonight. First up, we have the section on subcommittees. And I just wanted to just, we don't have anything to talk about with the subcommittees. Just so the policy subcommittee, we're going to start meeting. We already have a newsletter from the MASC. There's some policies that need to be tweaked because there's a law that's been amended. So that will be coming up soon. And we have the educational philosophy of the district. I just wanted to say we have, that's for Becky Fidler, Gordon McKinnon, and Scott Walker. So I didn't know if you guys, it needs to be done. We need to have the educational philosophy of the district done hopefully in the next couple of months. So I was wondering if you guys might be able to schedule a meeting with Kelly and meet and get, and if you need any help or if you need any guidance or even a copy of the old educational philosophy of the district, just let me know and I can try to, yes, give assistance. And the budget subcommittee, we should hopefully start meeting maybe in November, December, as soon as I get some word from Liz and John. And school committee goals, that needs to be updated. It's time. Needs to be tweaked. The dates, the timeframe is old. And we have Amanda and Lauren and myself. Hopefully we'll be meeting in September and I anticipate maybe one or two meetings at the most for that and hopefully we'll get it done. And then anything that goes to the, these subcommittees comes back to the full committee and then we vote on it as a full committee. So just so, I don't want you all to feel like you're left out or anything. The votes always has to come back to the full committee for approval. And then one last thing. So capital needs is not listed on here, but Gordon, did, do you know, after you got put on capital needs, after we did the reorg, did Barbara or anybody have anything sent over to town hall or no, you don't know?
I don't know. I reached out to Kelly a number of weeks ago and said, who's my contact on capital needs? So she sent it over to me, sent me an email. I sent it over to, is it Michelle? I'm not sure. And I said, you know, tell me when your meeting and all that. And she said, yeah, you'll hear from us in September.
You need to get sworn in at town hall.
Oh, on the capital needs?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
Ellen, can you just only, because I wrote it down when you listed the other ones. Who's on the policy subcommittee? Do you have it in front of you?
Yes. Amanda Coligan, Scott Walker, and myself. Thank you. And then do you want to know what the other ones that I have here?
I have educational and I have school committee and you listed budget. So no, I think I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I can look it up now.
That'll be helpful. When you said, oh, never mind. I'm going to pass it over to Superintendent Legault for lots of information for our very first meeting of the year.
Sure. Welcome back. As we get ready to open up next week, we are in full bloom. First rain we've had in a long time, which was nice, but unfortunately, it's our first full couple of days of spring sports. I'm glad that band camp was last week. They had to go in the hot, hot weather, but at least they got to go outside and enjoy to be outside. Football started on Friday last week. I think you had a Friday and a Saturday morning practice, got Sunday off. And then all the kids were out here yesterday, ready to go and we got, we got some rain, which my grass needed it and I'm sure that many of your lawns needed it as well. Lots going on. This week, we have teacher orientation and when Dr. Williams gets there, when we get to Dr. Williams' part this afternoon in a little bit, we've had teacher orientation this last week. Many, many young teachers, new teachers. We are welcoming them to East Bridgewater. They're very excited, very nice bunch of men and women. And I think we have a very well-rounded group of professionals joining East Bridgewater Public Schools. I would like to thank the East Bridgewater Insurance Agency and Arvela Insurance for their very generous donation of golf shirts for the 2022 season honoring the 50th anniversary of the East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School Golf Program. So years ago, when the high school was being torn down and they were building the new high school, many people from East Bridgewater could go and buy artifacts, get a piece of the gym floor, maybe get a chair or a desk. I think Dr. Williams took some lockers. Bought some lockers.
Right.
Bought some lockers. Mr. Shea has a piece of the gym floor where he got his first three-pointer and many, many more after that. But the old insignia or the emblem that we had was this. The Viking, the horns, and they had a golf ball inside of it. And so this summer, the, Mr. Skagon from EBIA and a couple others went to a golf tournament and he had bought this shirt way back then and took this shirt out of the old high school and thought it'd be great to give it to his team. And then as they were out there, Mr. Leonard was part of that team and he said, wow, wouldn't this be a really neat thing to bring back for 50th anniversary and to recognize where we've come from and where we are today with our golf. And so the new shirts look like this. They have no insignia from anybody else. It's just, so I know that your picture had something on there, but it's just the emblem in the front and I think it's very nice and I think it does represent, you know, who we are in the district of East Bridgewater. We do remember where we've come from and where we're going and that history is, is part of growing and building. So I think those are great. They look beautiful and which, you know, we want to thank for donations and when people think in this way, it's just a really neat, it's really nice to see that. I would like to welcome Matthew Pawcott as the interim principal at the Gordon W. Mitchell School. I asked Mr. Pawcott to come this evening. I would like him to come up for a moment. You're more than welcome to ask him any questions you'd like. He is very eloquent in his speaking. I think you'll enjoy talking with him. He's sent his first letters out to his community and is, he'll be getting his student letter ready, I think, in a couple of days. He's getting ready. We just were talking in my office for a moment. He's very excited to open, but Matt, if you'd like to come up and maybe?
Is this okay?
Yep. The chair would open it up to some questions and Matthew Pawcott, our interim principal at Gordon Mitchell. Hi.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here.
I'm curious to hear about you.
Oh, we got all night, right?
Nice open-ended question for you. Here you go.
Been a long day, Matt.
Yeah, that's right. There's a, there's a lot I would love to share. I can just give the, you know, a snapshot or an overview of kind of what brought me to this, this excellent spot that I'm in right now. I started my schooling out in Arizona. I came back and I got my master's at Hanover Newton Theological School and I actually received, I was a bonus award recipient of the Massachusetts Institute for New Teachers. It was a program that the state was running at the time. And that launched me into education. And I started off at Danvers High School as an English teacher, became the department head over there. That was a fantastic experience. I started to get sort of an administrative bug or an urge to kind of, sort of broaden my perspectives in front, my educational perspectives. And I saw that there was a new positioning open up over at Hanover and as a humanities director, and I took the leap. At that time, I was living in PBD, working in Danvers, and I took the job at Hanover. So it was, it was quite the leap and drive at the same time, but it was worth it. I never really experienced education from those perspectives and from that, sort of that, that vantage point to be able to sort of lift a district academically, socially, and even participating athletically in all those areas. That was really a rewarding experience. And then the principal of Hanover High School at the time, he was asked to be the business manager. And I guess complimentary-wise, the superintendent asked me to be the principal of the high school. So I said, yes, absolutely, of course. And I just absolutely fell in love with the nature of that position because it entails everything under the sun. When you pull up to the building and you park your car and you look around and whether you're looking at a goalpost or a student or a window of the building, the curriculum, the instruction, the assessment, whatever it is, it's all on your shoulders, but you're not doing it alone. And I thrive on that sort of responsibility. But I did that for over 22 years now in education, 23 years, 24 years, similar districts. And just recently, I just, you know, I said, I want to take a leap and experience some new perspectives, some different educational philosophies from different districts. And so I took this post as a, in a K-8 turnaround school in Fall River. And it was just eye-opening to work with, back into my literacy days. When I was an English teacher over the summer, those associated summers, I was a literacy consultant and traveled around from state to state and helping schools develop literacy programs. So being able to bring sort of that knowledge to bear on a turnaround school was absolutely rewarding experience. I fell in love with that age group again and I was thinking back, I was sitting back and saying, wow, if I could bring my sort of literacy experience that I love, a curricular experience that I love, but combine that with the role of principal with this age group, that would be a dream job. And then I talked to the superintendent and that's exactly what was presented to me. And I could not be happier nor more impressed with the district so far. The people that I've met down to the person have been genuinely welcoming, enthusiastic. I said, I had, my greatest joy is moving districts forward academically, socially, athletically. It looks like everybody's enthusiastic about taking on those challenges, doing so with such an amazing positive attitude. I don't really feel like I could have landed in a better position. It's my hope to, to be here for a long time. You're going to get everything I can possibly give selfishly and unwaveringly and unconditionally. I'm really excited for the opportunity that was presented to me and that's what brings me here. That wasn't too long, was it?
No, it was great.
All done.
Does anyone have any questions?
I don't think I have any questions. I just want to say that I think I speak for a relatively decent-sized group of parents. We're excited to have you and see what you can bring to Mitchell.
That's good. Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm excited too.
You're welcome. We look forward to working with you.
Likewise.
Thanks, Matt.
Yeah, thanks, Eve, for the opportunity to say hi and meet you guys.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
At home, we'll see you early in the morning. Thank you. Jean and I went, Dr. Williams and I went to the Massachusetts Superintendent's Association Summer Institute in early July. Probably we get out, I think we left here June 30th. I think we had Fourth of July weekend and then we were back down at the institute. Again, this year, the focus of the state from the commissioner is social, emotional learning, inclusivity across the board, diversity, working with all, being mindful of who our audience is, and being positioned to continue to work together and to create opportunities for all. We spoke about the teacher shortages. I'm happy to say that we are in terrific shape. There's always a little bit of movement at the end. I will bring a couple of those movements up, but other than that, we are in terrific shape. And we did talk about COVID and monkeypox. I can only stress this as much as I can every day, all the time. Kids need to be immunized to come to school. I understand that some people don't believe in vaccinations. However, vaccinations and immunizations work and I hope that people are vaccinating and immunizing their children. And as a woman of 52 years old, to be, I've been boosted and now my doctor said, you know, you should think about getting the shingles vaccination. And, you know, I've seen people get shingles and I've seen people get congestive heart failure because of the shingles and pass. So as, as I guess I get older, I get more realistic at what I need to do. So I just stress, you know, if you can get vaccinated and get your kids to school, we hope that we don't see the monkeypox here in East Bridgewater, but we're event-driven and it could happen. And COVID is here. We are not going to shut down and go home and shut down buildings because we knew what that, we know what that did to us before. That's not going to happen again and we're ready to go, whether it's asynchronous or synchronous, or we have to, you know, go for a day. But we are in great shape. We've, we've ordered masks, we've got cleaning supplies, we're in good shape on those two. But those were things. And safety. We are going to, we do multiple trainings with Alice. We do multiple trainings with our police department. I know that Dr. Williams and I have had conversations over the last year. We need to do more of them. We need to do some more real-life situational trainings. It's very difficult when we do these in schools. People get very nervous. People aren't sure why the fire departments and the police departments and you see maybe an FBI car out in front. We are going to plan something like that. Not next week, not the week after that, but hopefully a little bit further down the line. And it's well-planned, it's well-thought-out, and we let people know when we are doing it, how we're doing it. We could, some school districts do them on a Saturday and we get some volunteers and we bring them in and, you know, we can film it and then show everyone. We have updated our video cameras. We have a security officer here at the front of the high school. I'm looking at, looking at a security person for the Mitchell School because it's an open venue. As you know, I've talked about this for many years. I'm going to continue to push on it. I will look for some ARPA money to get those doors sealed because once you get in that first door, we can't get through and somebody, and I always hear, we just can't get locks and we can't get this for it. Well, we've got to figure something out because those are glass doors, so we've got to do something different. But if we can get somebody there right now, that might be the way that we start progression. But we are looking at safety. And again, I say to parents, I say to kids, if you hear something, if you see something, tell anybody. Tell an adult, tell the principal, tell your teacher, tell the lunch lady, tell the custodian guy, tell the security officer, tell somebody. Let us know. If you see something on social media, I don't know how many other ways I can say this. I've said it last year, I'm going to start off this year. It's really easy to be behind a keyboard and to send a nasty message out. People need to think about what you're sending out about a 13-year-old girl or a 15-year-old boy or a nine-year-old birthday party. You're a school system, I'm the leader of the school system. The drama needs to stop. End of story. Like, I can say it to kids, I can say it to adults. Please, grow up. I don't know, I don't know how any other ways to say it. We haven't even opened school and I had some calls the other day on a social media post. We haven't even opened the doors yet. We don't need the drama. These are kids. Let them come to school, let them learn, let them be part of band and drama and athletics and the Unity Club and the Little Vikings Club and everything else that we have to offer. And let them be kids. They don't need to grow up so fast. And so those were things that we talked about. When it came to safety, we have heard from the commissioner. He, we have a man that works with us, Ed Davis, who is a former police officer and I think FBI agent. He works with our education department. He's on all of our meetings all the time. They are watching all of our social media apps. They're watching all of the school districts in the, in the Commonwealth. They watching people looking at our websites, looking at us, looking at kids and trying to find a vulnerable child or a student who may be looking at things online. There are people out there who are predators and that are looking for kids to carry out some type of objective. So he was on there, he was there. The commissioner talked about a lot of safety. I can tell you that, there's a lot of safety. So, but other than that, it was a really great time and you get to, you get to talk to your colleagues. We're not alone when I talk about social media. We're not alone when we talk about social, emotional issues. We're not alone when we talk about inclusivity and working to get more diverse in the South Shore. There's not another school or another superintendent that could come in here and say anything different than I'm saying. And I was on a Lighthouse meeting two weeks ago and, or three weeks, whenever we were at that and everybody's saying it's, you know, diversity and inclusivity and we'll work together. We had a great administrative retreat last week, August 15th and 16th. Central Office, principals, assistant principals, we met here, we had lunch together, we had breakfast together. And Dr. Williams and I have been talking for probably the last year and really looking at our strategic plan and working with our principals and all of our administrators. But one of the goals that we have as a district, from my goal, when we do my goals and for all of my principals, including and, and central office, including Dr. Williams, the business office, special education office, food service office, will be relationships. How to nurture relationships and to communicate with each other professionally and understanding where everybody's lane is. Because everybody has a lane and we all think we can do it alone. We can't. We can't. And I've said it since I've started and I'll continue to say it until it's my last day or I, whenever it is in education. We cannot raise a child without the village. You can't do it. And we can't have a great school district and be successful without communicating with each other and having communication then with our faculty and our staff and then having our faculty and staff engage in communication with kids. And if we don't model that type of behavior, then the behavior that we model from central office, and I would hope that Dr. Williams and myself especially, who speak with our principals, I believe that we do model that, that our principals are modeling that with our faculty and our staff and that our faculty, when speaking and working with our students and our most vulnerable students, and when I mean most vulnerable, I mean every student is vulnerable. Not just a student that has an issue or that may be shy or that may have an IEP or that may be gifted in some way and not, every child is vulnerable if we don't accept the child. And we have really worked very hard on talking about this type of work and how to be a complete district relationship-wise from pre-K through 22. And we have a child, we have a student in this district that's going to turn 22. So when we talk about the spectrum, probably not the best word, but we're acrossed. When I talk about the rainbow, we're at one end of the rainbow to the other. So we've got, we've got our work cut out for us, but I really believe, and I think Dr. Williams would agree on this and she'll take over in a minute, the principals, I really believe that they were with us in this work and I think that they're seeing it. And I think it's, it's come loud and clear with how we worked with them last week and how we will continue to work with them. We have our 22, 23 new hires and I have just put in the materials. There is a couple of on my sheet today. We hired a few more instructional support assistants. We have not laid off a teacher in over eight years. We have only added. And I'm going to have those numbers for you after this is complete, probably in the October 1st meeting, once we get through every, once we get through the next couple of weeks. I can tell you that we have had a few movements in the last few days. I spoke to a superintendent today. I don't, I wasn't very happy with him. He wasn't very happy with me. One of our teachers has left. He called me and he says, can, can I get them tomorrow? And I said, that's not very fair, you know, you, we're not really supposed to poach each other's teachers, but I certainly understand it was a closer drive, it was a different type of position. So I wish the, the teacher the best of luck, I wish the district the best of luck, but I did talk to the superintendent this morning and we went back and forth. But that's what I do. I mean, and people think it's like, oh, yeah, go ahead, do this, do this. We're three days out of school right now in, in our lives. We've got tomorrow, Thursday, Friday, and then we're done. Teachers are back. That's when we, that's, we're full bore. Monday, they, they talked with me and they, and Dr. Williams talked about our, a little bit about the professional development family, our guest speaker, but we, we're done and we have to have people in place for kids. So, but we'll figure it out. But if you look at that list, all our kindergarten positions are full. Our preschool is full. Our special education, new access classroom is full. Grade two inclusion, special education teacher is full. Grade two teacher is full. We have the new phys ed teacher at Central School, new grade two teacher because we had a grade two movement to go. We had Beverly Pauline is moving to the Mitchell School, has decided to go to third grade and we've hired a grade two teacher. We have a special education teacher in some separate, which is a new position. We've hired an LPN, new position because we have a one-on-one student who needs support with an LPN. We've also hired a certified nursing assistant just today. We have another child that needs support. We have instructional support assistants. We lost two today that were, had teaching certificates, wanted to stay in East Bridgewater but got called by another district. They were going to stay with us, be an ISA. Lots of times, Dr. Williams would tell you, that's a lot that happens at Central School. A lot of ISAs, get their teaching degree, they stay because they want to work at the Central School. A couple of teachers got called and they've gone to another district. It happens and we'll fill those positions. We are still, we have a grade three special education inclusion teacher. Ms. Tarpe is transferring into a new position and we are, we just hired for that position today. New grade five teacher. New grade three teacher. We have a new behavioral specialist coming down from the high school. We have a new, we have three new custodians. New principal. New ELL teacher and new instructional support assistant. And we just hired, I just talked to Matthew before he left, or before we came out here, we have another, he's just hired an instructional. We did have a music, music teacher, John Freezy, who was here last year. He had life situations have come and so we need a new music teacher. If anybody knows of a music teacher, if anybody's looking for that, we are going to have a general music teacher down there and most likely, and I've been saying it for a couple of years now, would like to run intramural band and intramural instrumental after-school. And John and I spoke about this and a couple of years ago about how we would run an after-school bus. The last bus that, you know, at the Central School is coming through about 10 minutes before, we get out of over at Mitchell School at 2:30. Why can't that bus pick up and, and then drop it, you know, four or five areas? So that's something that we're going to look at so that we can, so that we can support Looking for a math teacher. We've, we've hired for a long-term maternity. We've hired another math teacher in 7th grade. We've hired an English teacher. We've hired another English teacher. We've hired a biology teacher, another special education teacher, another special education teacher in a new room. We've also, and then we've hired another special education teacher. We've hired Michael Powers, comes back. He'd like, he's going to go into the front office as, as an administrative assistant. He wants to follow in his mother's footsteps. Wonderful to have Mike. He knows the kids and he has a wonderful demeanor about him when he talks to kids. We have two new behavior specialists that'll be working up here at the high school. We have Karen Carlisle joins, comes back again as the high school adjustment counselor. Ron Taylor didn't really leave. He's staying. He thought, he thought he might want to be a, he thought he might go, go take another step and another leap and then he said, no, I think I want to stay here. I think East Bridgewater is my home. We have a new seven through 12 music teacher. We have hired the new special education teacher and we're looking We have hired the new special education teacher and we're looking, I think we're down to one instructional support assistant as from what I'm understanding from Mr. Clement's last text message a couple hours ago. And we've hired a district based, or district-wide B CBA specialist. Lots of people, we, like Dr. Williams talked a little bit about, we've hired a new communications and media coordinator that we had a grant. Josh Carton, hired Brandon Powers at the high school, Barry Nichols for custodian. Carrie Sims and Mrs. Hector, Mrs. Heather Fowler-Wechter are going to stay in their intervention positions at the Mitchell School. We met Kelly Sampson, she takes over for the Barbara Polisi. But this page is full. And if you look at it, it's, it's a lot of tracking right now and a lot of movement. And, but there's not a lot of red on that page and that's, that's the goal. By Friday, well, most of the instructional assistants will be all set. The CNA just isn't on here, but she'll be in tomorrow, I'll be signing our new CNA, I talked to Jay Phelan today. Credentials are all here, so we're all set to go on that.
That's the question?
I am saying, not anything, no, we're.
I have a question.
Sure.
You mentioned with the music teacher at the Mitchell School and having general music up there. So does that mean that they won't have band in the different?
Like I, like I said, we, when you run a, when you're running a schedule, this has come up a lot. I have talked to Mrs. Mancini-Pavlov about this. I spoke to Mr. Ray Ponti about this. Mr. Gentile and I used to speak about this all the time. When you take two or three kids for trumpet, I'm just going to use trumpet. If it's the flute, if it's the drums, you take two or three kids. Where do the other kids go when those two, when those three kids are pulled out? If the kids have intervention, those kids are missing intervention.
I thought band was during specials at Mitchell.
There are two bands, there's one special, they, we have two specials, not, and the instruments, there's only three or four people that go. If we have eight, if we have eight teachers on the third grade and only seven full-time specials going and you have one instrumental, those classes then get, start to get pulled. It's, it's a scheduling matrix right now. And for the last couple of years, we've been talking about this, to have two general musics. They can all do band. I don't, I'm not saying that we can't have band. But to do, to do it the way it has been done over the past few years, schedule is not moving where we can have CPT. We're pulling kids out of specials for different types of things. For OTPT, for speech, we can't continue to do that. Kids need to go to specials and we need to find time to do these things so kids are not pulled out of academic periods to do things. We have been doing that. We have seen what it's doing in our assessments, we've seen what it's doing to students. Students should never be pulled away from their peers out of any type of, out of any programming. I don't want to take band away, I don't want to hurt the music program. I have given a lot of support to all extracurricular, whether it's band, whether it's athletics, and I'm going to continue. Right now, the schedule is set, we haven't changed anything, but we are looking for a general music teacher. If they keep it and, and they can get three or four where they do instrumental out of the six periods in the day or six, seven periods in the day, then that's fine. But you can't, we can't just hire somebody who's a percussion person and then say, okay, we're going to take three people, eight to, eight, 45. Cause where do the other 22 kids in that class go, or the other 18 kids in that, in that class go?
But this is where, cause I just want to know that I'm understanding.
I, I get it.
That's all. Aren't those 22 other kids going to gym or art or?
They might be, but if, if you have eight classes and I had, and I, we have, when I first got here, there were five specials. And the kids couldn't all go to specials on the same day. So I started filling up specials because when a T, because in their contract, we have an unassigned block. Teachers need an unassigned block. When they get their unassigned block, the kids have to be someplace for a teacher not to, so a teacher is not anyplace. So if I, if, right now, sixth grade has eight classes. Eight teachers, eight classes with two inclusion teachers on that team. Eight, we have eight specials. So when Ms. Legault's class goes to gym and we might do, I think they go in six, I think they're going in four-week increments so they see all the specials throughout the whole year. I go, then Ms. Williams, Mrs. Williams goes to band. Mrs. Pennington goes to tech. Mr. Shea goes to art. And we go right down, all the specials that we have. So all the students get to see every special that we have and that's where we get the unassigned. We're trying also to have common planning time for teachers so that they can work together as a team. What we're finding right now though, what we have looked at for the last year and Andrew and I, we started this last year. We were hoping to, to get this done this year and we are going to be looking at a schedule, we are looking at schedule changing for the following year. We are pulling kids out of gym or out of art or out of music or out of something for OTPT, for some type intervention, we might be pulling for intervention. We may even pull students that are in special education with an IEP out of their math class because that's the only time we can pull kids out of classes. We can't continue to do those things. Students need to be with their peers, with the regular education teacher, with the special education teacher in the class and get the math instruction as the math instruction. And what's happening at times, we're start, we're starting to pull people in all these different directions because of the way we're, we're scheduling over there. I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm not saying it's right, I think there's a better way, we can look at these things and get it done. I have received a lot of inquiry about the music. I can post it any way you want. But what's going to happen is we're going to get, we're going to get into a box. And right now, we have eight specials. If you have an instrument dedicated person, that means you have seven specials. When you have a team of eight, you have seven specials. Where does that other class go?
So Mitchell has a band teacher, right? I mean, I'm sorry.
Music.
I got, I, yes. I got distracted. So Mitchell has a music teacher. So if we hire someone to replace Mr. Frazee, is that just going to be another music teacher?
I mean, I mean, it's just like at the high school. I mean, we've, we've got Mr. Hatchfield, Ms. Pavlov.
No, I know, but this, but if band isn't going to be a special, like if, so I'm just curious how it's going to work out. If band isn't a, a special or if we're not pulling kids out, so if we have a second music teacher, how does that?
If somebody cut, listen, if, we got to a point where it was just last week that John Frazee pulls out. If I knew six weeks ago, I might've come back and convened and said, do we need another music teacher? Do we need two musics? How about three physeds? Cause I got one health, I got one wellness and one phys ed. Should we go for three physeds? Should we go for another tech? Should we get another art? Kids love art. Should we go for another steam room? I mean, those are things that we, that's what happens. And we have great athletic programs, we have a great music program. And I understand, I remember Ray coming in and being like, Liz, we can't hurt the program. I said, Ray, I don't want to hurt the program, but we're running a schedule down there too. And I have lots of teachers down there, lots of kids. You know, you've got 500 kids, almost 600 at Central, you've got almost 700 at Mitchell, a little bit more. They've got to go, they've got to be with somebody. And we are looking to, I mean, if somebody came in with a specialty, band specialty, that's wonderful. And if that's the person we choose, then that's the person we choose. We may just have to say, we're going to run band a little differently this year. Maybe, maybe we find spaces that the third grade band meets at this time. The fourth grade band, the fifth grade band, the sixth grade band, and then the whole band meets on Thursdays at this time. It's a, I think the problem, you're, we're in an intermediate school, we're grades three through six. If it was six, seven, eight, be a bit, a different, you know. I'm looking at it, one for the kids. Not every kid's going to be a basketball player and not every kid's going to be in the band. How do we offer both to both?
Right. I, my, I have a more general concern about the band situation. Obviously, we, we have a fantastic band program and have for a long time. Between, I mean, we, this is what, like the fourth different band teacher at Mitchell in the past four or five years. I'm, and a lot of kids dropped band during COVID because kind of, even my own daughter, now she's back into it, but like, I'm not doing all that. I'm concerned with the inconsistency here that it's going to be detrimental to our band program. I mean, obviously, up at, up here, we have a fantastic program and fantastic teachers. But Mitchell School is kind of the feeder program for that.
I agree. If, if Ms. Mancini-Pavlov and the new principal come in and say, Rebecca Fidler is a great fiddler and, or a great trumpet player.
I could be, I could be.
A band, uh.
Wouldn't that be ironic?
She's an instrument, you know, she, she knows a lot about instruments, she knows a lot about the band, she knows, she's been in the band, she's, knows marching band, she knows the jazz, she knows this. And we can make it work, then excellent. But what, I don't, I don't, I'm not saying lose it. I'll run an after school program. I've been saying for the last four years, let's run an after school program. I got intramurals and, and we go, what, four week, three to four week programs right now. And we have boys and girls playing soccer, boys and girls playing flag football, they do basketball. We ran it all last year. I asked John Frazee, do you want to run after school? I will support it, I will certainly put funds for it. I will ask you to put funds for it, we will put them out there, we will support kids. I, I love the middle school because I was a middle school principal. I, I know what they can do, they're going to do a lot. However, we also have contractual obligations. We also have IEP obligations. We also have kids that go to physical education and maybe not have dexterity so their OTP, so their physical therapy, OT goes in with them to help them get the dexterity, to be able to open their hand and to close their hand, but they'll, but they're in the gym. So we're trying to hit a lot of buttons. I'm not saying it's out of the thing, but I, I guess, I, I guess I could, I could put it up, I could put general music up today and I could put band. I don't know who I'm even going to get. And I'm serious about that. I can tell you that Matt was in my office a little bit ago. He was on his last, I think it was, we have a maternity leave. We just got it, so now we've got to fill it. Okay, we put it out. We had a couple of people that are retired that want to come back. Maybe an opportunity or stopped teaching during COVID and decided to come back then. It's an opportunity for us. I don't know what we have in music right now, I haven't seen it. I posted it, general music, truthfully, not to hurt band, not to take band away, but to get more people. Because when you specifically put something up there, if I put a calculus teacher up there, that's what you're going to get. And you may not get a lot of math teachers, you may only get specific people in calculus. So I opened it up thinking, let's see what we get and let's see who's out there. And I don't want to hurt the programs, I want to better the programs. And if we can run an intramural band program after school or in the morning or midday or find a place in the schedule, I certainly would do that. But that's why I did put it up like that. And we do it like that, or I did it like that, I said to Amy Stevens, because she posts everything on School Brains, or School, School Spring, put it up as general music. At this point, we need it, we've got to get somebody in there. If we were a school, if we, if we were a school system, cause I know, swimming is like, it's like almost a cult. If you're a swimmer, they swim in the morning and they go back at night. If you, if you know big swim schools, they start at five o'clock in the morning, they swim as a team and then they come back in the afternoon. If you don't have a middle school program, everybody goes nuts, why isn't the pool open and the middle school should have a pool? I would still, if, if that was us today, I would say, I know you want a swim instructor and a swim coach, but if I put up phys ed or someone that has Red Cross CPR and Life, Lifeguard, I would put it up. That's really why I posted it that way. I will tell you this, Ms. Mancini-Pavlov has called, has asked to meet with me. I've met with the principals the other day, they said, you know, you know, we know that we want, had the band. I said, I understand that. Do you have somebody? That's my next question to everybody. If you have somebody, please have them call my office. Couple of weeks ago, John Shea went for three weeks and waited and waited and waited. We posted it in, how many places, John, did you post it? Not one person called for custodian. I put it up on Parents Squared, we had 13 applicants in this district. We hired every person that is a parent in this district to be a custodian. We tried to go out, John, on School Spring for crossing guard. We couldn't do that, we put it on a Parent Squared. I have four, three women coming in tomorrow. It's a good job for a, you know, mom that maybe has a preschooler, to come out in the morning and then go back. It's not as easy as, as people think. If Ms. Mancini-Pavlov has somebody, I don't want to ruin the program, I want to make the program better. However, I was looking at it from, I'm looking, from here, I'm looking at it, how do I get a teacher into the school? How do I make sure that every one of the sixth grades, fifth grade, fourth grade, third grade, all the special teachers? And remember, when the special teachers need an unassigned block two. Do we have enough teachers to be in those classrooms when the special teachers need their unassigned? I've heard people want recess. If I can run specials in the morning and specials in the afternoon and have band in this net, do we need recess? So I mean, I mean, we're looking at a lot. I mean, and it's a lot and I know it's very difficult for people to understand, I'm trying to get people in place right now. And if, if anybody knows a band person, please have them call us. John was a total surprise, I never saw that coming. I can tell you that. And I don't think Ms. Mancini-Pavlov saw that coming either. I think she had some young candidates in the spring before we hired this new music teacher. They may still be available, but I can tell you this, those specialty areas, there wasn't a lot out there this year. So hopefully, and I, and I understand, I, I understand that people get nervous that, you know, we're trying to take a program, we're not, I'm not. If I could have four music teachers, I would. There's only so much time in the day too. I looked at the schedule, I don't know if any of you ever looked at that schedule? It's very difficult. I don't, you know, I talked to Gina, at Dr. Williams about it the other day and I said, where are we, like, there's a lot of space in there. These teachers are working so hard, all of them down there. And I feel like we're spinning like this. And that's what I, I went and talked to Dr. Williams about. I said, maybe we need to look at this differently because everybody is doing a lot of work, like spinning. And I want the kids to have fun also. It's, it's middles, it's that in-between. They're giddy. My favorite grade is fourth grade. They laugh from the morning, the time they get up to the time they leave. It's like ants down there, the sun comes out and everybody's running. They go home, they, they're exhausted. It's not like high school, they stay, they start at about one o'clock up here, they get, they get ready to go.
You know, so. You put your job postings out, not just, not just School Spring, you put it out in other, other places too.
We put it out everywhere. I just put, I, I, when I spoke to the superintendent today from a different district who took one of our teachers, I said, do you have a music teacher? Do you have anybody that I could, that, that you could send over here for a trade? And he laughed and he's like, no.
Do the colleges around here, like, tell, can they tell us, their new graduates, whoever, whoever graduated with a music degree?
They can't. So they have a platform handshake, so we post on that and most college students will use that platform as, like they have for most School Spring. Because we have a partnership with Bridgewater State University, lots of times I'll just directly send a message to the dean saying, you know, if you have recent graduates within the program. We've even said, you know, people who are very close to graduating, that we could work together in partnership to have some oversight and getting them into the position maybe even a little bit sooner. I know since COVID, the commissioner's been very flexible with what they allow for qualifications for people to, to start in a job as long as we have the supports and mentorship in place. Is just too many openings and not enough people in education?
Is this a typical, what a typical shift looks like each year or is this, is part of this a result of COVID?
Some of this is part of COVID. We, we opened a couple of, two new special education room at Central School that is needed. at Central School that is needed for seeing more of severity and what we need to support rooms. We want to keep kids in-house. We don't want to send them out of school, out of district. We know that staying at home, being with your own peers, having your mom, or getting on your own bus, or even having our vans pick you up, it's better than traveling an hour away. So we opened, so when you open a room at Central, so we opened one two years ago. Now you've got to open it at Mitchell. Now we just opened one at the high school because there was two students at Mitchell two years ago, and now they're here. So now, so now we've got them all in place in all areas. Next year, you'll probably see another room open. We do, I don't want to say they're medically fragile, but we do have a few students that, obviously, you've seen on here, that are going to need medical support. So, we've, I feel that we are hitting every area that we possibly can to do everything that we possibly can for East Bridgewater students. Adjustment counselors, we, I mean, like Gina said, Dr. Williams said today or yesterday, you know, seven years ago, we had like one in the district that was going. Now we're two here, trying to get two at Mitchell. And we've got, well, we've got one at Central and try, maybe try to get another one. So, I mean, we are, we're working. And they are difficult to find. I don't know if you know anybody that could, but send them our way. This is typical movement. You've got some retirements in there. Maternities in there. I mean, you're seeing them on the right. You see what they are. But you've got maternities in there. You have some retirements. We had some resignations. Some people want to move close to home. There is one in there that had a child that may, you know, go. We have a teacher right now who has asked to go 50% and pursue a consultancy. I'm meeting with that teacher tomorrow to discuss what that looks like. And I know that people say, well, why, why do people do that? It's, it's education. This is what people do. They're professionals. They can do these things. You know, some people want to teach at college and do a 50% load at a high school, and then they want to teach at night at a college. So, I'm doing the best I can. We have posted, I mean, I don't know what else we could do. I mean, the custodians, John Wade, I mean, we had everybody out there for weeks, so. But I know that Ms. Mancini Pavlov wants to talk to me about this position. As I said to Ms. Dupre and Matt yesterday, or the day before when we talked about this, we've put it open for general music because that's what we need to support right now. That doesn't mean we can't find spots in the schedule to do this, but we can't continue to pull kids out of classroom instruction for different things. And we've got to, we've got to just look at that schedule and make sure that the model works for kids. Any other questions on music?
No, but we'll have, whether it's during the day or after-school, there'll be some, some form of band.
There'll be some sport of instrumental support for the band.
Okay.
Isn't that how you, I don't know how you say it.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I can tell you, Bill Kaman, I wish Bill was here tonight. I wish the principal of the high school was here. He was, he was in the high school band. He was in the junior high school band. So when he's in these meetings with all of us talking, he's a proponent. So, if anybody thinks we don't, we get what he's saying. Like, I mean, and we know Ms. Mancini Pavlov, she's the director of music for the district. But when you have a principal in there saying, you know, we want the support coming up, and I understand that, but, so I asked Bill, I go, where would you put it in your schedule? And he was like, oh, yeah. Because right now, I mean, if you look at the high school schedule, some kids run out of electives by their senior year. So that's something that Bill was looking at. So, we're looking at it, and yes, but I don't want to, I, I will certainly have this discussion at any time, and anybody can ask me these questions, but I don't want to be a singleton and say, well, it's just about music. And I get what you're saying, Lauren. It's like, we don't want to lose the program because we've built it. And I think we've put a lot of support into the program over the last few years. And we'll continue to do that and we'll try to make it work. You know, I wish Linda would, you know, maybe we'd look at it that way. Maybe I talked to Bill. Maybe Linda gives up a couple periods up here and goes down there. You know, I mean, I'm just thinking, because Ray used to go down and do, teach a class a long time ago because he didn't want to lose it because we didn't have instrument support. And he would go down there and make sure the kids had that. So that's something to think about as we move forward. So. But anytime you have that question, please do that. But we have faculty staff resignations, and you've seen that. I just wanted to show you the food service, public service releases. We just want to tell people to continue to fill out the free and reduced lunch forms. Please continue to fill out the transportation forms. Anything that we send you, please fill it out. It doesn't go against us. It just, it just gives us, it gives us a better census count and it gives us better data for Title I, for the federal government, for the state government to know exactly who we have.
Excuse me, Liz. On that point, what I read is that, okay, so every student gets a free lunch from elementary up through 12th grade, and the state reimburses us for the cost of those meals?
Yes.
They reimburse us for what we would have been charging the students anyway?
I believe that's how it works, Jones. That's exactly how it works. And then what happens is if we don't get those forms filled out, then we're chasing it. And when you don't have the forms filled out, then you can't, then the grant and the fundings don't come through. We don't, and I can tell you, nobody, like, you don't say, oh, you're the free and reduced kid. You're over there, and you're the reduced kid, and you're the full kid. We don't.
It's part of the fun of free lunches. There's no.
There's no, right. Years ago, I can tell you, years ago, they used to separate you.
We knew in school, we knew in school if somebody had a ticket or something like that.
Yeah, we had a different line.
We had two different lunchrooms.
Oh, yikes.
Yeah. The resignations, I'm not going to read those names out loud, but you can see those names. And there's a resignation sheet. And I think that's about it on me.
I have a quick question, which can be a simple yes or no answer. I was reading the COVID guidance earlier, and I'm just wondering, it's an easy one, I promise, if, I know toward the end of last year, they were doing symptomatic testing in the nurse's office. Will that continue this year or no?
If we, if the district would like to continue it, we can. At this time, the kids were not being, we didn't find that kids wanted to be tested.
Right.
That was the big thing. Or we would, or.
Right, because we have to call home anyway and find out if they want them to be tested.
So it's up to the district. If the district would like to continue testing, we did not, I did not order any more tests as of right now.
Okay.
The commissioner asked if we wanted to continue testing. I talked to Karen Clifford. She was our COVID expert at the time. It was difficult to track. I mean, as you know, our nurses did a great job. Karen did a great job. We didn't find that it was working. I mean, it wasn't a big.
Right, I know the testing stay definitely wasn't a big thing, and the optional testing wasn't a big thing. I just wasn't sure if, like, a kid shows up to the office with, like, three symptoms.
We still have tests.
Right.
If the district wants to continue where we were in the policy that we had, that if you go and your mother signed, your mother and father signed up and you wanted to test, we can still test. Commissioner said that was, that was fine. But did I order more tests? I did not.
Okay.
Because we got to a point where we had, the Binex tests were going home. And people were calling us, like, do you want these boxes back? Because we haven't used them in our house.
Okay.
And that's the truth. Like, people were, like, do you want me to drop these boxes off? Does anybody need them? I have a whole bunch. And I walked into CBS C L D, and I saw a whole bunch of Binex, and I was like, they're selling them? Like, we have, like, you know, we had so many, but they were selling them. Masks, if anybody, masks will still be worn when they walk into the nurse's office.
The nurse's office.
Yep.
Now, I, I know there's no, nobody even wants to talk about masks, but for those children who may have an at-risk parent at home or someone has a surgery coming up, they're still allowed.
To wear masks.
Wear masks.
Sure. We're not preventing anybody from wearing a mask. We still say you can wear the mask, and there's no, no issues.
And that will be supported?
That will be supported. We just, I haven't done my letter. There will be one more coming up, but I'm trying to let the principals get all of their information out.
Oh, yeah.
That's why I wanted to go first with my letter, just welcoming everybody back. Now the principals are on it, and the principals will start sending out that type of information.
And is there still, like, ARPA funds or funds that could be used for tests if you wanted to buy them?
Yes. We have an ARPA meeting coming up with Mr. Seeling. I just asked him yesterday if we could meet. I cannot, he couldn't meet this Friday. There's no way that I can meet next week, the opening of school, so I asked him, in a couple of weeks, could we sit down? But, I mean, we've ordered masks. We have, we have supplies for that. We have support for that. I think we're going to be, we're in good shape when it comes to that. I just wanted to give you just a couple of updates. I don't want to take much more time, but technology update. The guys over the summer and Marion Tavars really worked very hard. We've got, like I said, we've got new outdoor security cameras. We've got indoor high school security cameras. They've done some network software infrastructure backups. We're going to be sending this out later. The lobby guard at the high school will be updated this week. And you all know what the lobby guard system is. Put in, a parent comes in.
Oh, yeah.
Put in that. So that's going to be updated. Installed new desktops, monitors, printers at the cafeteria manager offices in all three schools. The new cafeteria has POS system installed. Teacher classroom computer software installed. All the Google Chromebooks have been updated and are ready to go back out because we have testing. Testing window's September 8.
Probably like more to the third week in September.
Third week, so I mean, it's coming like right away. So, we're ready to go with those. New third grade and seventh grade Chromebooks prepared. Phone system circuit cutoff, cut over and processed, and vinyl printer cutter installed. And John's going to be making lots and lots of car wraps and things in details. I'd like to, when they come out, I'll have you. You'll be able to see them.
It will save us money.
Yeah, okay. Transportation update. All I want to say on that, I don't want to get in, I don't want to go crazy on that. Again, all I wanted to say, I got an update from Mrs. Benner and Mr. Shea today. All I want to say is take a deep breath. We're going to work with everybody. I know what people are going to say. Come down my cul-de-sac. It's big enough for a bus to turn around. It's not big enough for a bus to turn around. Yes, 302, there was a kindergarten picked up there last year. Now why are they going to the other side of 307? Because there's a kindergarten over there. It's not because we like that house better than you, or we only like the odd numbers or the even numbers. Just give us, next Wednesday will be our first run. We know. All I say is take a deep breath. We'll get through it. If you're having trouble getting a bus route, please email Mrs. Benner or call Mrs. Benner. Let her know that you have not received any information at this time. I know that Mr. Shea, I know that Mrs. Benner have received telephone calls, and some parents have been a little bit upset that they didn't like the stop, or they didn't want this, or they didn't like this. Just hold on. Let's, let's get through the first couple of days. John, how many do you have right now? Appeals on your desk?
We have about 70, I believe. And, you know, the proper way isn't to email or call Joanne. We have a form on the website.
A form on the website.
That's the only way we can keep track. Because if we're getting hundreds of phone calls, we'll never be able to keep track of it. But compared to prior years, this year's been pretty good. You know, I think we had about 70 appeals right now. The majority of appeals or concerns, the majority of them are because the parents didn't, the families didn't sign up for busing. They didn't pay for busing, or they never signed up. So, obviously, we tell them, sign up. And then we submit that information to the bus company, and we get them on a bus. So there's about 30 right now. I'm meeting, I'm going to Lucini. Again, I've gone three times already. We go through the bus routes, every single one, from start to finish. We look at where all the kids are. So I've got about 30 concerns that I will sit down with Gail at Lucini, and we will just work through them. We should have another bus route published either Thursday or Friday. That should include all the updates of all the people that didn't sign up and weren't on the previous one and any concerns that we feel are true concerns that we should, should address. And they haven't been called an idiot on Facebook yet, so.
There's still time.
There's still time. Usually by now, it's.
I mean, we want you to fill out the forms. We want you to fill out the appeal. I do not want, and I, I know that John did not mean this, and I know that Joanne does not mean this. If you need to call or email us, call or email us. Somebody's going to pick up the phone at Central School. Everybody's in. Someone's going to pick it up at Mitchell School. Somebody's in. They have, they have the bus list. They have the passes. I have it right here. It says what they were giving out today. Each building has the spreadsheet, so you can call your building, if you're Central School, Mitchell School, or the high school. Get on the phone, ask the question. I haven't received anything. But give them a little time. I mean, if they don't answer right away or just email, they'll get right back to you. If you don't get anywhere there, please call Central Office. I understand that we're inundated and we get crazy, and it may take us 24 hours to get back to you. Nobody's not getting back to anybody. But please, don't feel that you can't call us. Yeah, we want you to do the forms because that's the best way to do it, because we'll see it come. But I don't want anybody to ever think that a parent, a grandparent, an aunt or an uncle, or whoever the guardian of the student cannot call and get a person on the phone. That's the train going through them.
That's like a train, but there is no train.
I've already talked about COVID and school safety. I'm going to turn it over to Dr., I'll go to Dr. Williams first because I think she's going to be quicker than John. Because she's going to talk about website, Parent Square and a couple things, instruction.
Yes, I'll go quick. So, welcome back, everyone. Happy start to the school year. As the superintendent mentioned, the last two weeks have been fairly busy. We had our five-day jumpstart program for students in all grades throughout the district, and today was our first Level Up Day for incoming seventh grade and ninth grade students. Tomorrow, we'll be at Mitchell School with incoming third grade students, and then on Thursday, we'll be at Central School with incoming kindergarten students. So, it's amazing. They come in shy, timid, not looking up, and then they are running up the building, talking to their friends, excited about the things that they've seen and learned, and I think it's just a comfort to know that they're familiar with where they're going on that first day and getting a chance to see classmates that they haven't seen all summer. So, that was exciting. I made a Brady Bunch reference, and then I remembered there's a lot of 20-something new teachers that didn't quite get it. I felt a little like Peter Brady with two dates because I was down here with new teachers, and then I was running down to the other end with the Level Up Program that Mrs. Linehan's been running. So in here, the last two days, we've had our new teachers. We have about 22 new classroom teachers in the building, and it's great to have these first couple of days just to get them acclimated to some of the things that they'll want to know and have readily available once students start coming into school. So although it's a little overwhelming for them to be taking in so much information, it is helpful for them to then be able to absorb it a little bit more and then be ready. So yesterday, they were in their own buildings, getting acclimated to their buildings and meeting with their principals. Then they met with Jen McPartland. So Jen McPartland went through all of their curriculum resources with them, so they knew which textbooks they're using. They knew the resources that they were using. And then today, they were with Mrs. Fisher in the morning, so she went through all the technology with them, Google Classroom, School Brains, all of the instructional platforms that we use. And then I was with them in the afternoon. We had a luncheon where the administrative team was here to introduce themselves from across buildings. And then I met with them about the annual mandated trainings that we do, the housekeeping platforms that we use if they're going to be absent or if they want to request professional development. I went through the new educator evaluation system with them, so talking to them about goal setting and their observations and walkthroughs. And then ended the day with mentoring the new teacher induction program. So it was chock full, but like I said, I'm hoping it at least gives them a reference, getting to know the people that they'll be most looking for when they need things in the areas of curriculum or technology, or myself in the civil rights area or professional development, teaching and learning. And I was excited to share with them that we are developing over the summer. I've had a team of eight teachers work with me in developing our new. I've had a team of eight teachers work with me in developing our new mentor training program. So all teachers that want to be mentors, we're going to have an in district training program. Because that's one of the things that is so crucial, is not only recruiting quality staff, but retaining quality staff. And the best we can do is the support that we provide to them, especially in that first year. So we've developed a new ment, a new teacher mentoring program that all mentor teachers will go through over the course of the year to better help them to support the staff member that they're working with. So we're excited about that. I shared that with our new teachers as well. In the area of curriculum, this year's curriculum review cycle, we've actually completed our six years, and now we're starting over again. So no resources curriculum is older than 2016.
I think we just, yesterday, we started it.
I know. It goes fast. The money goes fast, too. So science and technology is coming back around. We don't anticipate it to be as, as costly as it was back in 2016, just because.
Say that every year.
I know. But, but truly, you know, looking at resources from 2016 is a lot easier than looking at resources from the 1990s, which we were finding ourselves doing as we went through these initial years in the curriculum review cycle. I mentioned to you in the spring, the student success surveys that we administered to all students, pre-K to grade 11, which are now our rising 12th graders. That really is the driving catalyst to how we look at our strategic plan and how we focus our attention. As the superintendent mentioned, at our administrative retreat, the focus was relationships, and that certainly came through in the surveys from student perspectives. You may remember looking at the survey. It had about six areas that we were focusing on. I probably won't remember all of them off the top of my head, but student-teacher relationships, a sense of belonging, climate, engagement. All of those things come down to relationships. Students are engaged when they feel they have a relationship. Students feel that they belong when they have relationships. Students feel safe when they have relationships. So that really is the focus. We'll be sharing those results with staff on the first day back. I'll do an overview of how it looked as a district. But then the administrators at their building levels will be looking at it from their building perspective. So the analysis that I did over the summer really spoke to strengths in each of the areas, and areas of concentration. And when it, when we look at areas of concentration, I looked at any question that was not answered favorably by more than 85% of the students, I looked at as an area that we need to focus on. Anything that was less than 70% is a priority. And then I broke that down by the subgroups, which students were answering questions that were not favorable, based on gender, based on race, based on their economic status, based on their grade level. Because we were even finding, as students progressed in grades, some of our strengths started to decline. So, like I said, the deep dive will happen in each of the buildings. Once it's shared with staff, then certainly I will bring that to a school committee meeting, so that you can look at that, too. And that will keep going back to our strategic plan. What are the action steps we're taking in order to bring those results up? We'll do those climate surveys at the end of every year, so then we can do a comparison from year to year to see if, if our action steps are actually having an impact. The superintendent has mentioned also, we're gonna get students involved, high school students. They can tell us what should we be doing on a daily basis to help increase the engagement levels of student, or making students feel they belong. Students feeling like they're being reflected, not only on the walls of the school, but they're being reflected within the curriculum. So, really powerful information that's come out of it, and really telling that our students are, you know, pretty insightful when it comes to looking at how we can improve. So, so more to come on that. Two other things that we're working on for this year that I'll continue to keep you updated with is, we've developed a parent conference committee. You know, since COVID, we've realized there are different ways we can do things to engage families. So we wanted to look at, you know, our current parent conference cycles. Is it the most effective way for us to be connecting with, with families and sharing with them how their students are doing? So we're really gonna pull that apart over the course of the year. And then at the end of the year, we'll be coming to you, looking at approval for basically adjusting our calendar. Should our parent conferences occur when they do at this time? Should they occur in the same manner in which they do? Are there other more effective ways that we can connect with families over the course of the year, so that they feel connected to the school?
Do you have the, a parent conference committee at all three schools?
Uh, so it's a, it's a district committee with representation from all three schools.
Is it staff?
It's staff, yes. So I sent that out probably late spring, asking for people that would be interested in being part of that parent conference committee, knowing that it would entail looking at parent conferences, as well as just our overall calendar. I think it's gonna also get into our half-days and our full-days, and how we are utilizing those, and the detriment it may cause to families, and the benefits it's, you know, may or may not be providing to staff. So as the committee is working through the structure and the changes, those will keep going back to school councils. So school councils will give feedback throughout the process, so that when I come to you for recommendations and approval, it will have already gone through staff, as well as school council members, which are made up of, of parents as well. Just two more things. So, district curriculum accommodation plan. We have a D cap. It's a curriculum accommodation plan that all staff should be using to support students who are not finding success in the classroom. We sometimes find ourselves getting into a cycle of referring students when they're not finding success, and maybe that looks like a core evaluation, a 504, an IEP. And we really should be taking more steps before getting to that point. There are things that teachers can and should be doing in the classroom to make their practices more inclusive and breaking down barriers. I've talked to you a lot about universal design for learning and the inclusive practices training we've been doing with staff. Now we're gonna put it into print in our district curriculum accommodation plan and train staff on what steps should they be taking? What strategies should they be using if they see a student struggling in a particular area of academics or behavior? And making sure that they've taken necessary steps before looking to alternative options of referring students for special education. We'll share that data with you as well, because that's pretty powerful, to see the number of students who have been referred, and the actual number of students have become, who have been found to be eligible. We're putting kids through testing unnecessarily, and we're absorbing special education teachers' time, conducting that testing when it doesn't result in a disability. So, there's about 12 of us that are doing the D cap training. It's all principals, all assistant principals. We have Mr. Phelan, our director of special education, part of it, as well as some special education teachers. So, I'll bring you the, the D cap once we have that formulated as well. And lastly, Parent Square. So we do have a new person in our media communications coordinator position. Kristin Dyer was here last year. She left at the end, towards the end of last year for maternity leave. And she must have had so much fun at home with baby Everly. She has chosen not to come back. So we do have a new person in the position, Josh Cotton. He has hit the ground running. He has background in IT, not only in media platforms, but also the backend, knowing that Parent Square has to talk to School Brains. And a lot of times, when we had to kind of pause things, it was because one system wasn't talking to the other. So his first and main priority is Parent Square. Two new components that we'll be introducing families to this year. I think the posting went fairly well. I think, you know, parents were getting information in a timely manner. Administrators felt it was fairly easy for them to do the posting. And now we're getting into attendance reporting. So parents will get a notice if their child is absent from school, just so that we make sure we're both on the same page, we're saying they're out, and hopefully you're confirming the same. There is a little bit of a delay, so it will pull from School Brains, and then within 45 minutes, parents will get that message. Some will get it within 15, but by the time they get through the whole system, it may be about 45 minutes before parents will get that information. And parents can open it up and actually fill in the note right then and there through Parent Square. The other piece of Parent Square that we'll be rolling out this year is forms and permissions. E-documents, you know, certainly are part of society. There's no reason why a lot of our documents can't be electronic as well. Especially as a parent myself, filling out the same forms year after year, giving the same exact information year after year. Because it will talk to School Brains, it will be a dropdown. Your student's name, grade level, address, emergency contacts, all of that information is in School Brains. And Josh is working on how we can get those within Parent Square, so that all you're doing is updating information and making the necessary changes. And certainly, hard copies are always gonna be available to families. But with Parent Square, as I shared with you, everything gets translated into native language. So families will be able to access all of those documents. Field trip permissions, forms, if volunteer opportunities, or if classrooms are looking for donations, all of those sign-ups are gonna go through Parent Square. And over the course of the year, we'll be rolling those out. So, as Mr. Shea said, use the program with fidelity, every component of it. So, we're making sure that we maximize the effectiveness of Parent Square. And then the other thing that Josh will be focusing his attention on is our website. He was a little horrified, and so he will be going through that. You know, certainly, if you've gone on the website, you know you can go three different places to find the same information, or you can go three different pa, three different places and find different information, or conflicting information. And we started just putting buttons on the front page when things couldn't be found. So that will be cleaned up over the course of the year, to make it ADA compliant, to make it more readily usable for families, and really making it the hub of the district. You know, that that will be the first place that people think to go. Anything we send out through Parent Square would be linked right to the website, so parents know if it's a form or something that we may send a message out, there's another place that they can find it, and it's always on the website. So, over the course of the year, we'll share those updates as well.
On Friday, we are looking at the websites, too, because we saw Andrew Gentile's name on there. We have, we're starting to remove. We're looking at those who have just resigned. That, that's all being cleared up now. So, and Josh is going through that, and we're going through that. Kelly's going through that, and so we're just trying to keep up to date with that. Dr. Williams talked about the strategic plan. I just wanted to say on the calendar that we will send out, and Kelly will start sending out, the first meeting for the school committee meetings, the first of each month, will be directly on the strategic plan. And I brought a hard copy for everybody. I know that we put it up on your Google, but I did bring a hard copy for you. And then the second meeting will be the business meeting. And I know you have a couple of meetings that are just one for the month, but I'm gonna just send this out. I know that, I'll just send the hard copy, but first meeting is strategic, and it follows this. What, I think I sent out an email the other day. It'll say, social, emotional wellness is strategic plan one. What Dr. Williams is planning to talk about with our facilitators in those areas, and what we're doing. And then if there's any questions, those particular that has come up, we might even start sending them out, if there's any questions from the community they'd like to know. And then we can answer them here at the school committee meeting. So that's, I just wanted to mention that, as we talked about the strategic plan.
May I ask a quick question about the attendance to clarify? So we, as parents, are no longer sending in or filling out that form the beginning of the day. My kiddo's gonna be absent. I don't have to go on.
The form on the website is, and that will be removed. That will not be. So it will be, notes are still acceptable. Phone calls are still acceptable. But when the attendance goes out, it, I think, has a little pencil that you click on, and you can write a note. We will be explaining to parents, it doesn't necessarily excuse the absence. It just informs us that you are confirming that your child is out.
And if we've called, but then we also get notified, and then maybe prompted, do you want to fill out a note? Should we also fill out a note?
Right. So that's gonna be, there'll be that awkward window, especially if a student comes in late, and the attendance has started to pull already. So we'll put that disclaimer on there for parents. If you've already notified the school, or if your child arrived late, you may be receiving this because it didn't have time to update.
And you don't have to update anything. You don't have to go, if you've already called, or something like that.
Right, right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm guessing, well, this is just probably a no-brainer. When the person revamps the website, it'll probably be not only computer-friendly, but also mobile-friendly.
Yes, because that is one thing that we've realized, is when you try to pull it up on your phone, it's got an awkward layout.
Thank you.
I, I think a lot of it just comes down to the attention that hasn't been paid to it, and.
Looking forward to the revamped version.
As am I. And then I, sorry. We are running one college course during the day. Sociology will be run for, for semester, for seniors, as well as we'll be talking to students about asynchronous courses that they'll be able to take here in the library during the, the school day in lieu of an elective. We're slowly rolling that out, based on conversations with area colleges. Now I'm really good. I brought, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anything else?
Sure.
Yep, next up, next up, we have lots of informa, lots of information from our business administrator, Mr. John, John Shea.
John O'Shea?
I must call him O'Shea.
If you look at the, at the first page, I, I hand it out. It is the beginning of the, of the year, so we're still settling in.
We're in good shape.
Very good shape. I'm still working through all, all the salary modeling and all that. But as, as far as non-salary, I think, right now, you know, there, there hasn't been any surprises, anything that I haven't expected. So for non-salary, we have a budget of 3.7 million. Right now, we've got an available balance at 2,353,000. Compared to last year at this time, we had a balance of 1,800,000. You know, like I said, this, this is the beginning of the year. We're still encumbering tuitions, transportation, and things like that. So, next month, the dust will, the dust will settle a little bit, and I'll have a really good idea of how comfortable I am with the budget, but I, I think we're, we're in good shape. At the bottom of the page, you can look where we ended. The fiscal year 2022, we had 21, almost $22 million budget. We had total expenses and encumbrance. We still have some bills that are yet to be paid of 129,000. But we're, we're looking at, we ended the year with a, we were under budget by $22,000.
Excuse me, do we, I'm sorry. Do we, do we still, I know there was some talk about what, what we get to do with that extra money. Do we go back to the town, or do we have a fund set up for it?
We, well, in, years ago, we worked with the town to set up a special ed reserve fund.
Right.
And the first year that we had a sur, we had a surplus of like $6,000 one year. They, the town agreed to put that in the special ed reserve fund. The next year, the town, you put in 250,000 of free cash into the special ed reserve fund. So we've, we've got a pretty good balance in there. There is a limit to how much you can have in that special ed reserve fund.
Okay.
So this $22,000 will go back to the town as free cash.
Thank you.
You don't have anything you need to prepay, or is it too late to do that, to like buy stuff, whatever we need for this year?
It's, we're done.
Okay.
Yeah. We, you know, so a lot of gymnastics at the end of the year, and, you know, we don't want to have a balance at zero, in case, you know, we've got legal bills that are still coming in. We've got telephone bills that are still coming in, and so, you know, 22,000, I think $22,000 out of 22 million.
That's good.
Is pretty good.
Thank you.
That felt perfectly, I never said it was too shady, very good about looking forward and reaching out to different stakeholders in the district. And I know he, he needs to utilize any of the funding that he's got, because he watches over it so closely. So it's not like he didn't do that. He did. He had to prepay for things as well. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Any questions on that? The second page is the revolving fund balance. We're in good shape, with almost every revolving fund balance. Preschool, you know, has a negative $1,300 balance right now. That is up and down during the year, when we get tuition, when we pay, when we pay salaries. That always ends up nearly break, well, break even or better at the end of the year. So, it shows a negative balance right now, but by the end of the year, it will be fine. So, it shows a negative balance right now, but by the end of the year, it will be fine. Circuit breaker, school lunch is a little overinflated, that $500,000 there, because Deb Vaughn has, she's done a lot of work with a lot of equipment and things like that, that just haven't, haven't been paid for yet. So, that balance is a little overinflated right there. School choice is still running about the same as where we ended up the last two years. School building rental is still 106,000, that's been pretty consistent over the years. I don't know if you have any, any questions on this.
The, thank you for this, the, trying to think what the correct question would be. Is it noted anywhere how we can use these funds, or what we typically do with it?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that would be helpful to kind of have that, say, oh, by the way, this is how this stuff can get used and help us.
Yeah, every one of these funds is based, is created based upon a regulation or a law. So, I can certainly provide that for you.
I'm going to cheat sheet for you.
Yep, thank you.
The third page is an updated grant summary. You know, things are added, grants, new grants come out during the year, and I will, I will update this worksheet if you, if you feel that it's helpful during the year. But as of right now, in the FY '23 column, we have Title I, which is the first line. We see, we're seeing a drop in our Title I grant funding. We're still trying to understand that, because it's based upon, and the reason for the drop is our poverty percentage has dropped. But our, so, that's the, it's not free and reduced, it's not low income, because if you, if you remember in Chapter 70, our low-income percentage went up, which resulted in an increase of our revenue. But this is showing a poverty percentage has dropped, which it's very confusing. We got, we got like a two-page explanation from the state, which we're still trying to figure it out, but that, that dropped about 114, $13,000. So, we use that to pay for ISAs. So, you know, like I said, once the dust settles on the whole salary budget, we'll figure out a plan on how to cover that, that drop in revenue. Our special ed fund code 240, that actually increased by $20,000, that's good news. Early childhood, our fund code, fund code 262 increased a little bit, we use that to pay for PT and OT contractual services. Title IV and Title II-A, Title IV increased, Title II-A decreased $10,000, that's professional development. We should be okay even with that decrease. If you follow down the list, SIR III, SIR III and fiscal year '22, we utilized $220,000. We have 1,076,995 remaining, and that is mainly going to pay for all those one-year positions that are, that are in the budget. We had a couple of new ones, we had the USDA fresh food program, which we can utilize to buy produce and freezer items. This, the summer, Gina filed the Summer Acceleration Academy grant, so we received $39,000, and that's paying the step up, is it level up?
Jumpstart and level up.
Jump stop and, jumpstart and level up program. And we, originally, we're going to use that, SIR III to pay for that, but since we got this grant, we're going to use the grant to pay for this, which would free up some money in SIR III. We received notice last week that the state is going to be funding, funding us $18,923 for MASS that we purchased in fiscal year '22. That was a little bit of a surprise. So, I need, I need to pull all the paperwork on that. If we paid for MASS, yeah, utilizing SIR funds, I can put that money back in SIR, but if we, if, if I don't have $19,000 of MASS that were paid in SIR funds, and we paid them out of the operational fund, that money goes to free cash. So, I have to do some work on that to try to figure that, figure out. I'm hoping we spent $19,000 on MASS using SIR funds.
If it's less than that, can you get the balance?
No, that, the balance, we definitely spent $19,000 on MASS.
To figure out where it came from.
Right. You know, if I use, I use CARES Act, we use operational funds, we use SIR funds. If we use SIR funds, I can put that money back in the SIR grant and spend it on something If I use operational funds, that money goes, is already, that money goes back to the town as free cash.
Because it's considered unspent money in our operational budget.
Well, it's spent money in our operational budget. You just can't go back prior year to get that money back.
Right, right. It'd be like leftover money.
Right.
If we got reimbursement from, like, say Medicaid or wherever for students, and then that money goes back to the town also, we don't give it.
And we also received notice that in the fiscal year '23 state budget, there was an earmark, a couple of different earmarks, but one of them specifically for us, $25,000 for the, for the new ASD classroom at Central. So, we are using that to, so, we have purchased a lot of things already, but we're going to get a touch view for that classroom, teacher desk, chairs, more inclusive equipment for that classroom, so, that's good news, too.
Hey, John, this, from my olden days, this, I don't remember seeing this before, this is really helpful, because it always bewildered me when you looked at our budget, and then we overspent the budget, and said, well, that's from grants, and so, it's nice to have a sort of a reference point, know where they go back to. And so, for instance, when we get the warrant periodically for what's being paid out, it references, are these all under a certain code?
25.
25, okay. So, it's all.
So, anything that begins with 25 is a grant, anything that begins with a 26 is revolving fund, anything that begins with a 1 is our operational budget.
Thank you. And, you know, going back to the revolving account thing, to me, that would be something, you could just give us at the beginning of the year, it's up to us to hold on to it and say, oh, yeah, now I know how to do this. You don't have to, you don't have to do it every meeting, or every month, or something, just one reference, say, hey, this is how we can use these revolving accounts. And same kind of note about the grants, that they show up on the warrant under 25-dash-whatever.
Yep.
Again, just a way to start the year out to refresh us, like, oh, yeah, now, now I know what I'm looking at. Thank you.
It's all coming back to you, right, Gordon?
Slowly, but surely. I just want to mention one other thing, Appa, Appa, I don't know if I'm pronouncing it right, I'm from Boston, Appa. The town has requested that departments submit their Appa requests by September 14th, I believe. So, we're work, I'm working on that, we submitted two already. One is for playground equipment at Central, for inclusive playground equipment. So, I submitted that to the town, that should definitely be a no-brainer. I also, in our capital budget, I had two snow blowers, and the Capitol Committee didn't approve it, but I'm fighting for those, because I think it's, it would really help out the staff and the public that are coming in here. So, that's what we've done so far. I'm going to be doing the new marquees at the schools.
We're going to get a new one at the Mitchell School?
Yes.
Well, I'm going to submit it to the committee.
We'll get those, because I think the last time, when we didn't have, we didn't have, we didn't have electricity, we had, and when the town didn't have electricity, the schools had it.
Yeah.
And we could have put up a lot of information on those signs, and I think, you know, after talking to Mr. Seelig, and the police chief, and fire chief, they could have really used us in some of those situations, so.
Yeah, there was some spirited debate on the Capitol Planning Committee about those.
The pavement looks terrific, if you haven't seen the new pavement at Central School, the safety lane, and the new pavement looks terrific at the Mitchell School, the lining is done at the Mitchell School. They've done a terrific job, so, and it really, it's really coming along. You don't have to go in about two mi, I mean, you should go two miles an hour when you're going into Mitchell, but before it was like, tush, tush, you're not going to, you're not going to bottom out anymore, so.
Should we reiterate to parents for Central drop off to make sure children are getting out on the passenger side?
Yeah.
Especially where there could be cars going on the driver's side now?
So, actually, Mrs. Byrne and I, and I think John was there, we talked about it last week at the, at the meeting, and they're going to be putting up cones out there, there will be, as you know, at the beginning, there's always a ton of people over there, that is a safety lane, that is not a passing lane, that is not a, that's not a lane for, you know, double car, like a double car lane. That is for safety vehicles to come through. Maybe I'll ask the chief, maybe we'll put up a safety vehicle there the first day of school. They're usually pretty, they're with us for that, boy, three, four days a week, the first three, four days of the first week, and the police cars are out there with us. I know that I always make my calls on the Friday before we start, or the Monday before we start, to Chief O'Brien, and to Chief Heron, they always have a rescue out there, and police cars, they'll help us with that. You know, and Chief Heron knows that that, we put that in there really for safety, I'm sure he'll help us out with that at Central School.
Yeah, the intent isn't to have a two-lane drop off.
No, and it says it, it's, they're going to put, we're going, we just talked about putting out some signage out there.
I think the cones would be great, just because otherwise, you've been open, and you're stuck in a long line, people are going to pull out.
And I think that, you know, Chief Heron's, last year, you know, they'll put the, you know, they can bring up one of their, what do they call it, the ambulance bus, pull that in, or one of the fire trucks that the kids love, or have the safety vehicle, the police cars in those areas.
Thank you.
You'll be getting a lot of information over the next few days, from your principals. We're trying, I'm trying not to inundate, we're trying not to inundate out of Central Office. I mean, I don't know, we're try, I'm trying not to say a lot. We tried to get a lot of it out tonight. And again, before you go into action items, just before, if you cannot get ahold of your school, please email the person you're looking for first, then call your school specifically, Central, Mitchell, or the high school. If you cannot get anyone there, Dr. Williams, myself, are available, Jay Fallon is available in, in special education. Transportation is difficult right now, they want you to stay on the forums, we agree with that, I do agree with that. However, if you're scared to death, and you're just, you don't know what to do, please call us, we'll, we'll get to John and Joanne, and we'll, we'll get back to you.
I have no idea, you can ask.
I missed that part, she was whispering to me.
I think there's some people in the audience, if you want to ask, if they are here, they have, do you sign up and put some?
I don't know where the clipboard went, I haven't seen it.
Okay.
Is there anybody here who wishes to say anything, are you here for public comment? No? Okay, thank you.
Only on the agenda.
What?
Pertaining to the agenda.
Right. Thank you. I'm glad we have some visitors in the audience, it's nice to see some friendly faces.
Looks like somebody's doing some extracurricular work there.
Send to his Eagle Scout project in a couple of years.
Taking lots of notes. Thank you, that was a lot of information, I appreciate it. At this time, I would take a motion.
We already did this, didn't we?
Take a motion to approve school committee meeting minutes as of June 21st, 2022, and right now, we're leaving the 28th off, it has a little tweak. So, only, we're only approving the June 21st, 2022 minutes, school committee meeting minutes. I took a motion for that.
So, moved?
Moved by Gordon.
Second.
Second by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I take a motion to approve accounts payroll warrants, 53 SV dated 6/29/2022, 55 SV dated 6/30/2022, 7 SV dated 8/10/2022, 9 SV dated 8/24/2022.
So, moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
And I take a motion to approve payroll warrants, 52 PS dated 6/22/22, 54 PS dated 6/30/2022, 2 PS dated 7/6/2022, 4 PS dated 7/20/2022, 6 PS dated 8/3/2022, and 8 PS dated 8/17/2022.
So, moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Lauren, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I take a motion to approve the payment of the school crossing guard salary from the transportation fees revolving account, 26/330/762/5131, for the 2022-23 school year.
So, moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
There's a new paper going around, needs to be resigned, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Action, I take a school, yeah. I take a motion to approve the sale of surplus pianos from the Gordon W. Mitchell School, and a printer from the East Bridgewater Junior Senior High School.
So, moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Lauren, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Maybe the Eagle Scout would want them and to fix them.
It's a lot of work.
Is piano tuning on your?
No.
So, Ellen, do you, does that replace this original one? And, anybody else have anything else? Oh, I wanted to ask, who's the speaker for the beginning of school?
Yeah, so, the first day back for staff is on Monday, they'll be in their buildings for faculty meetings, and then they'll be here for district-wide lunch, heated by perfectly-flavored cafe. And then, we have our welcome address from Superintendent Legault, and then Calice Warnham from DW Diversity will be here. So, she actually did professional development in the spring for staff, she was here for our admin retreat last week, and she'll be the keynote with the focus of relationships on Monday. So, all are welcome, she'll be here at 1:00.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I hope everyone has an excellent school year, new, brand-new school year, which I can't believe is finally here, coming up fast and furious, and a safe school year. Anybody else?
I would echo that, on the first day of school, we're sorry to the town, it does go very slow, there is a lot of interruption in the, in the roads, especially at Mitchell School and Central School. Not so bad at the high school, because a lot of kids ride the bus, but in our, a lot of kids that got cars over the summer, or last spring, that got their licenses in the spring and summer, they'll want to get here early and start their regimen of who gets what parking spot, where do they start, who gets it.
I hear that's a big ordeal.
That's a big deal. We just asked, please be careful, kids will be riding their bikes, some kids are going to be walking, please, please, please be careful. If you see something, again, if you see something, say something, let us know. We will be out at all of the, I'll be here as the buses take off, we'll be here out in front, John will probably ride a bus. We'll see the kids get off the bus at the high school, Gina and I will then go down to Mitchell School, John will get off a bus at Mitchell School, he'll get back on a bus at Mitchell School, and then Gina and I will head to Central School, and we'll see everybody along the way. If you have any problems, just keep, keep calling us, and we'll get to you as soon as possible.
Thank you.
I think we probably should say thank you to the DPW.
Yes.
For, they did a lot of work on, on, on street signs for the cross marks, flashing lights, so, that's, that's a great job by them.
Notice, it looks nice.
We still have some signage that's going up, our flags out here, they have been ordered, they just, some have come in, not all have come in. I'm meeting with Brian Kiley on Friday, there's going to be some more painting in the, on, you know, the Viking heads, they'll brighten that up. They are, I know that, I'll be speaking to Brian on Friday about the last time you're going to see them on the mowing, the blowing of the pavement and sidewalks. Our guys do it, but they come through with the big machines and really help us out, so we look ready to go. If any student or any parent does not have a backpack, does not have brand-new sneakers for school, does not have some- for school, does not have something that needs for a child to come into school and to be ready to go, please contact my office at 508-378-5956. We don't want any child to come in and, and not be ready, and we can help with that, we can help.
Thank you. At this time, I take a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Amanda.
Second.
Second by Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck to everyone.